Good evening, everybody. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zone Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice in the meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Overfunded Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule before the year. Notice of the schedule was sent and published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January twentieth, twenty twenty three. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is now directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. Broke up, please say it.
Mr. Jessing?
Here.
Ms. Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Forte? Dr. Locker?
Here.
Mr. Gisela?
Here.
Mr. Beatty? And Mr. Leever?
So goodbye, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever. Okay, before we begin, we have a little bit of situation I like to discuss both applicants professional with. We had expected to have a full board tonight. Unfortunately, I received a very late notice that someone was ill. That leaves us with six voting members. Both applications require a D variance tonight, which requires five positive votes. I would like to give you guys some time to consider with your clients and see if you want to move forward, but he knows that you do need five out of six positive votes to carry. And we'd be willing to make any accommodations as necessary because this was a late notice for us.
May I have your notice as people?
Sure, why don't you guys take ten minutes? We'll do some administrative items and I will carry on. Like I say, it was not expected. Okay, let's think of some administrative items. Prolement is January twelfth, twenty twenty three executive session. I was not in that session, so someone would have left me.
Were you in January this week? You were in?
Oh, January one, I was.
You were, right?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Vonnberg?
Yeah. The regular minutes from the twelfth of January, I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes in regular year. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Locker?
Yes. February second executive session.
I can make a motion?
I'll second it.
Ms. Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Oh, I second. I guess.
And Dr. Locker?
Yes. Regular meeting minutes February second, I made a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Jessing?
Yes.
Ms. Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Locker?
Yes. Dugan, nine thirty-two River Road. Oh, that's the only one, okay. I will make motion to approve the resolution on Dugan property as submitted.
Yeah, I'll second.
Mr. Jessing?
Yeah.
Ms. Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Locker?
Peralta, how are we with, what are we with on Peralta?
He's got an architect and he should be back shortly with the numbers and then it'll go to Elena.
Okay, so I guess we have to carry that to. As I'm saying, make a motion to carry the approval of the resolution, Peralta's resolution to the, what are we, an April meeting? April fourth?
Getting up, getting up there. Whether?
April sixteenth. Something good. That's my bridge.
That is.
Do we need to do anything for them? Do we need to call them?
The applicant is. That's right, we're past our timelines on those things anyway, one more of the other. Yeah, okay.
So we don't have to.
There, no, I mean.
We just carry it to them.
They're trying to comply with the condition, but sorry, it predated me, I just wondered.
No, they're trying to provide information on the residential part of. They're spying us.
Okay.
We can't do the resolution until we have this.
Yeah, I think we, maybe that's not the meeting that I can't remember what it is.
That would be only Thursday.
It's probably the day, it's probably the meeting after. Probably we got.
The week after.
Yeah.
Twelve or whatever.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I will not.
Six, I will be in South Carolina.
All right, we'll carry that to you.
No rats.
No. This may reservation.
Yeah, it's April sixth and I also.
April sixth, yeah.
Yeah, because I think these were the night.
It is.
Yeah, well, that's.
Okay, well, we can. At a visual man. Yeah, we, let's start with that. All right, we'll push that to the end. Okay. So, Mr. Van Arce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Read a little bit here.
Okay. Yeah.
Let me do this. Anybody who will be testified, think they might testify, add to your proceeding, let it spread them in as well as our profession.
I try.
Sean Stare, when the testimony, you're going to do the truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
What I'm going to ask you to do is the instructions I gave before, before you start testifying, state your name, sky your name, record your recording, just so if you ever need to take a appeal, we'll know who's speaking. Follow the direction of your counsel. And if I have patterns, I think you have a couple of additional exhibits there. Everybody can take their seats. I think we have a writing from the. It's the Geography and Map Division, a reference librarian, where she provided us with the writings and some maps. Mark that as one and two, that I think brought to A ten.
So it's sort of consisting of four keys.
Right, there's two maps, the writing and the key, right?
Yes.
Okay.
They aren't stapled together.
We'll mark that as A ten if we can. And. Don't think I have any other exhibits other than those, although I think we did have a late entry where we got, we did receive A nine, but we previously marked that. Was there anything else?
I believe that it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to pass it. Sorry. Yeah, I got one, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, before I ask you for a very, your comment on what has been marked as A ten, I would just like to refresh our recollection that. The reason why we're here is because Chiara's property contains two dwellings. A main house and a cottage. The cottage has been occupied for many, many years, as long as I've been associated with. Very, and that's a pretty long time, and long before that. When we were here for last time, you asked us to see if we could provide more information as to how long this cottage had actually been occupied. Mr. Chiarella might do a good deal of trouble and actually was able to find through the Library of Congress. Some maps which show these two dwellings on the property, and the map is dated nineteen hundred and twenty-two. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Waterberry so she can explain what we're talking about.
Yeah, so the exhibit that I, Elizabeth Waterberry, E. Waterberry Associates, W. A. T. E. R. B. U. R. Y. Did you need my address too? So the exhibit that I provided to you has four sheets to it. The first was really the email of them transmitting it to me. So that you could see where the source of the information was. It was from the Library of Congress and from their particular librarian. I had asked them. How do you receive a copy of this? Do you want us to send you some money and you send us the map? How do you want to do it? And she instead sent me the link. So that you can see where that came from. Anybody who wants to can type in that link and, you know, get the same map. In that map, it has sections that you can click on. One of the things that you click on is key map. And it's basically the key map for the sandboard map. The sandboard maps were used early nineteen hundreds and even in the eighteen hundreds. They were fire insurance maps, but they were also used for, you know, the choir departments as well. There were several different keys that were associated with them. They were very specific in what they were trying to relay, so they weren't necessarily trying to relay it as if it was a giant survey. As we know, a survey to be a property, but more a survey of the buildings and the types of buildings that are there and alert for them to know how to not just insure them, but also to deal with them. So in the key map, you can see there's quite a color coding. The color coding will tell them what kind of structure it is. And in particular, one of the things that I wanted to draw your attention to was that to go past the color part and to go down, there's three boxes. And underneath that, there's one, two, three, four boxes up at the bottom of the line of keys. It says that anything designated with a D means dwelling. Okay. With that, we went from that to the overall map. I provided you a copy of the overall map. It's actually in pretty good clarity so that if on your computer, you know, you want to zoom into any of the areas you're walking to. I highlighted for you on sheet three of the exhibit, I just blown up the area that we had of interest and had. The only addition that I made to that was I just put the words project site on it where our law was, where our project was. And you can see that it shows in the front of the dwelling. A D with the dwelling, the bigger building, we have a building once, and the one is relating to the restorings. The next to that was a one A, one-story accessory, and then to the rear of it, it shows one D. Now, in those days, when they made revisions to the maps, they kind of cut and paste things, overlaid and et cetera, and that's why some of the lines don't necessarily line up along the way. But it's more of a summary as to what's at that particular property. And you say, well, how do you know that that's your property? And in front of it, it would give the address. You'll see the right in front of the main building and has the number sixteen.
Thank you.
Only other thing that I had was down at the bottom, I had taken the little key that was down at the bottom of the big key. And I just put it down to blow it up for you so you could see the copyright thing. And again, you know, the source maps, the fifty-two that's there is actually the sheet number of the joint in. This is actually in forty-three. One of the tricks of this was trying, I remember when I was very young. Fairhaven, Truesberry, and Redback were all under the same zip code. They were all oh seven seven oh one. And so these maps were actually contained under Redback.
Thank you.
I think it would be helpful to the board if you could briefly go through the non-conformities that presently exist on the property and what changes are proposed? And what changes might eliminate some of the variances which originally were required.
So to recap first, to a sense of what we had spoken about before, the existing property is oversized, five thousand square feet is permitted in the zone, is the minimum permitted in the zone. We're a little over eight thousand, eight thousand one hundred and eight. In the existing condition, the. We have the two dwellings on the property, so those are non-conforming because you're only allowed one on the property, so we have to do. We had just spoken about these particular maps looking to indicate it as a pre-existing non-conforming condition. So we have that that exists on the property. And because of that, when we go to put the second story on the front building, we're in a sense expanding. The pre-existing non-conformity by making one of those structures larger. So that's one of the beliefs that we're requesting. And that's certainly the planner will go in much more detail about that. We also have on the site. Pre-existing non-conformities relating to the setbacks to the back buildings, two point one feet on the side setback, there's five feet on the rear setback. And each of those, you're required to have seven feet on the side, you're at two point one, and you're required to have thirty feet to the back and you're at five. The main building in the front conforms, but the one in the very back that we're looking to not change well, that exists is. Has it non-conformity? We also have the garage. The garage has existing setback of three feet and three feet. That is also one of the structures that show on that sandboard map. And that is required to have five feet. We're not looking to change any of those. Those are existing conditions that we're not looking to alter. Where the proposed addition is going, conforms in front yard, side yard, we're looking to conform to the maximum compatible floor area you're permitted on the site. When both buildings are combined, we didn't look to say, hey, the front one works, but it goes over when we end the back. Now, we're looking to be within the criteria. So you can see that the proposed second floor addition does not extend the full length of the first one for that purpose, so we want to stay within that. In addition, the existing site is over on coverage. You're permitted in the zone, the coverage of. Where did I go on this? Fifty percent and a building coverage of thirty-five percent. In the existing condition, there are decks compacted with canyons that are not conforming in their setbacks. On the northern side of the property, we are offering to remove those. And in removing those. And shaving off some of the existing parking area that's in the back, we are bringing the site into conformance. At the last meeting, we had also indicated that we would remove the shed. That's in the back. There's another hundred square feet that comes off. And I had prepared, you wonder if I have. I had prepared just so I'd be able to speak to it. I had redone the calculation and we would go where our existing is fifty point two percent. In our prior family, at forty-eight point five percent. And when the shed comes off, we're at forty-seven point three. So we've gone from a non-conforming condition to a conforming condition. We also have shown removable wood patio in the back, and the benefit of that is that it allows us to provide the required number of parking spaces. For reasons for the two dwellings, it allows us to give the parking spaces awkward back out so that you're not stacking upon each other. And each of the dwellings has free access in and out of the site, which is a much safer and I think better condition for all.
Can we speak to the parking issue? Because that's something that's been bothering me since the last meeting. You're increasing the intensity by adding the second floor going from, what, two bedrooms to four? Is that what we're going with this?
Yes.
Plus the building in the back. So you have the potential of having more cars than today. And how are we not have a lot of coverage issue when it looks essentially like I've got a house with a parking lot in the back of it?
Well, I did, I did include, and we have very detailed lot coverage calculation here on the side. And I did include in all that the driveway, we have driveway ribbons that take us to the back. We have a stone parking area and all of that has been added into your lot coverage. So it's all broken down very detailed. And, you know, and double checked and.
I am looking at the rendering, it just. I mean, it's the way that it's visual to me, it just looks like a huge parking area.
Well, I will share with you, I'm actually reducing what's here now. So if you go to sheet one. Of the plans. And maybe it does the, oops. And your, for the second part, it was finally not going to involve the ones from your file. You're looking at sheet one of the plans. I've shown the areas that are being removed. A portion of it's being removed. If you look at the parking area, the stone parking area, you have your wood patio and you have the stone parking area. And it shows a portion of that that's kind of being shaved off.
What's the existing lot coverage? Do we have that?
Fifty point two, it's on sheet two, there's a detailed breakdown. And if you'd like, if I might, this was just more from my. They try to have the numbers right, but if I could offer this, it has the breakdown as well.
I see, in the, as a manager.
Okay. So.
Have you included the driveway in the lot coverage?
Yes, we have that apron down at the bottom where your ribbons that come in. We're proposing to change the ribbons for what exists now, keep the look from. From that has, you know, the two that come up and the grass is in the middle.
You're not, you're not counting that grass, you're just counting the ribbons?
Yeah, just counting the ribbons, yes. And I believe that that's how you would calculate it in the back.
Yes, I've seen it because we have more of a front yard setback than I'm expecting.
Did she, you've reconfigured your front walkway in your, in your page one, it says to be, to be removed.
Yes, but I reconfigured it because the door got moved to the center so that the blocks in front of it, both are included.
You're anticipating a question I'd never ask. Did you put the calculation back in for this? You are putting another walkway back in.
Yes, it is, it is in. You'll see that in the front walk and stairs, and maybe I can provide this and maybe that would be a.
So you're anxious to do that, so we'll mark that as A eleven?
But then you can see everything that's in, so.
Thank you.
I highlighted, you know, just like page because of removal of the shed. Otherwise, it's exactly the same as what's on sheet two, only if they're looking at eleven by seventeen, so this is bigger. So I highlighted, you know, what happened with the shed. You can see with the lot coverage calculation, I have a front walk and stairs existing in a hundred and forty-eight square feet. The proposed is a hundred and thirty-three. It's a more direct broken in, so it's just slightly less in the area because the other one does a little zigzag. And I would imagine that you're in here also took a very deep look at the calculations when he was doing the review to make sure I included everything on the sound files.
Certainly did.
Does this proposal also include removing a fence that is now encroaching over the neighbor's property?
Over on the northern side, you can see that there's wood fence, and there was a little bit of wood patio that appeared, so put one over as well too, so we're looking to correct any apportments.
And the proposal is to remove that wood patio area, remove the fence?
Yes, and that's shown on sheet one. What's not shown has been removed because it was not revised since the last was in an extra revision, it would also cover that as. Yeah, being removed.
Just to remind the board members, we have no bulk variances on the second story. Is that correct, Mr. Rizzo?
Correct.
What we are adjudicating is the use variance and intensity, and increasing the intensity of the use on this lot. So that's, that's to be borne note. This, the map that you submitted, has there been, was there any other information available, obtainable, to show that it has been an occupied dwelling at all? I remember that was part of the discussion, if I recall correctly.
Well.
Continuously.
We.
Continuously, thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
We have tried to get as much information as possible. That seems to be the most definitive that's possible to get and show that this property actually conforms to what the tax bill says. The tax bill said nineteen twenty-one, instruction date on these two properties.
The, we did file for open requests for information to see about COs and so that it came from the town, and there was none provided.
I am, I am curious on one thing, and I don't mean to be stickler. So if you look at this, right, and the sixteen of the D in the back, it's shown as a rectangular structure. And the shape of it is not like that, right? More of a cross? And you could say, all right, well, maybe it's just the detail on the map, but if you look closely at some of these other smaller. Shapes that appear throughout the map, they do make adjustments, even the one across church here, twenty-five, all the way in the back. Like you could see on the structure, they've made very slight adjustments to the way they mapped it to account for the fact that the building is not a rectangle. So I guess for me, I just wonder if it's. And I hate to say this, but if it is the same structure, or was this a different structure that existed that was taken down at some point and then a new one built? So just to keep that out there, so let me, it's true or not, but certainly does not appear to be the same shape.
There, if I could just remind, there was nothing within the property tax record itself. I know you showed me the one document. But my, my mentioning the property tax record would show, and it would show what is on the interior for tax purposes and assessment purposes. There's not been an opportunity or that record does not exist in Fairhaven?
Insofar as we know, all we have from Fairhaven is what the tax bill shows.
So far, in all the pressure, did anybody, did anybody physically go see those?
Go see.
Go take a look at the property tax record. As to what, I mean, there's, there's assessment on an annual basis, some at event. We've all had those people knocking and going, say, I want to take a look. See what you've done, and usually those records record what is inside, I'm assuming. Because I know you did get your sanitary steward, and trying to see how that was, and we maybe want to tie that up, but I don't see a differentiation there. As to how that was hooked up, again, I'm looking.
Well, it's been hooked up, and it's been hooked up for quite a while.
Okay.
Yeah, the nineteen seventy-two one shows the line going up along the side and to the back of the building. The main building is connected from the front. That is a connection that went to the back.
No permitting or anything like that, no permitting for. The line moving from the town, just.
We made requests to the towns and there was no to the town. We even made a request to Monmouth County Towns Office to receive copies of theirs as well too. And we have received nothing. I also contacted the water company. I was verbally told that there was records that went back to nineteen forty-nine. And given an email address to get copies of those, and numerous times sent records to, request to them as well too, to get copies of those records, and there was no response.
I can also say that one of my helpers in the office actually went to Monmouth County. To review the records and was unable to find anything wrong.
Mr. Van Arce, how far back do you know that this has been a legal rental?
Insofar as we know, back to the nineteen twenties.
That's not exactly true though, right? It just shows dwelling, it doesn't necessarily mean it's continuously occupied, right?
Yeah, right.
I didn't know that this. Again, I'm not trying to, but I'm not trying to split hairs.
And it could also have been, you know, I don't know if the property, no, it would have been the help could have lived there, the southern walk could have lived there, the grandmother could have lived there.
But not from that, from a zoning standpoint, the fact that it's a inhabited residential thing does not make a difference because it's too residential.
Yes, but rental.
Even with rental versus a family member living in the back, it's a detached separate, and I believe that the planner would go through that. In more for relating to that as relates to zoning. So from a zoning standpoint, the fact that it's dwelling in the front and a dwelling in the back, whether related to the same people or not. Or, or help or whatever, you know, is not a differentiation for zoning.
And just, and again, pressing because I want to make sure that there was clear on record. You received no responses or no one has answered you, or there's been no response as to a record? And again, I want to make sure I understood, you said, you know, we don't have any information. That means nobody answered you or?
Or they answered us and said, as to the opus in the town, it was answered and said, there's. Or they answered us and said, as to the opus in the town, it was answered and said, there's nothing to give you, they gave us what they had. Which was very little, and I believe that we provided it, was for a porch permit on the back of the house. Before the owner, the current owner on the property, so that's what the responses were, uh, were minimal. Um, and as to the water company, I was advised that there was something from nineteen forty-nine. Here's the person to contact, the only way to contact them is through an email, and they did not respond.
No response.
I would add one thing, um, my office was able to. Find. A resolution of this board. Going back to. December of nineteen ninety-seven. Do you want to mark that? Yes, uh, in which. In which the board. Um, clearly recognized that there were two dwellings on this property. And authorized. The construction of the deck, which we are now proposing to remove. Um. Clearly recognize. This still.
So we'll mark that, if you want to mark that as A twelve, the twelve brought to. Two, two pages. Two page. Resolution, can you give me that date again, please, sir? Or, I'm sorry, I can be patient. December of nineteen ninety-seven.
Seven ten nineteen ninety-seven.
That's a result of the order that we were speaking about, and that's what was provided.
Second drawing is a zero three point. Yes. He's got it.
Whereas the board, after carefully considered, the evidence, then by the applicants and joining property owners and other interested parties, public hearing. Held on November sixth nineteen ninety-seven makes the following finds of fact, the subject premises. Has a dwelling in the rear yard, the second dwelling has a side yard of four point three, where five feet required. Second dwelling has a rear yard of three point nine, with thirty feet is required. And a garage, the side yard of three point nine, where five feet is required. It's all quick and check, and see if the mansion's still in English.
They're slightly different with the book, right?
Different measurements.
Well, we actually were removing, I don't know if they were going to the wood deck, that was beside, and we're removing it.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, was this? I think it's twelve, twelve?
Is the original A ten, by the way?
Sorry?
That's right.
No, we won't talk in this. Thanks. Thank you. And I want these over to the boss.
Yeah.
I know, it's always very tricky when you have these, these. On what was what, and what represents what, I appreciate the effort you guys have put in.
Any questions for you, Woodbury, before I ask Mr. Capone to testify?
Are you gonna bring your uh, architect up for?
Insofar as I know, the architects, uh, testimony is complete, but if the board has more.
I should have a couple of questions, maybe sort of. The. The attic access, that's gonna be a pull-down access, not a fixed staircase?
Yes.
As in pull-down, correct?
Yeah, so it's pull-down, um, not a fit, not a fixed, it would just. Be up in the ceiling, and then come down.
And then there's, um, I think it's proposed, the red doors on the side?
Yes.
That's to an existing?
Existing basement.
Okay, that's.
We didn't want the car strutting.
Okay, thank you, it's all out.
To show where you're really. Or you don't have to exact.
No, I agree, I agree. And I think one of the things to go to what you were, Mr. Forte, did I say that correctly? Yes. So, Mr. Forte, I know that some of these show the shapes and all to them, I think it's such a small structure in the back. This is not a survey of it, it's more of an accounting. I don't know how else to kind of put it, that, because these were insurance maps. Sure. Not like an official, because you can see that even some, some of them, if you were to go out, probably have different like little setbacks and that kind of thing to them, so it's more just right now.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, I wasn't trying to be stickler, but it is, I mean, it is clear. If you do look at other. Shapes in here that are similar size, a lot of them do have detail that this one doesn't, that, that's all I was pointing out.
Yeah, most of the ones that have more detail are the principal buildings. Because there's other dwellings that are on second dwellings, if you look across the street, at lot number twenty-five. Uh, there's a second dwelling that's on there as well, and it's. You know, a little more rectangular, it looks like it's got an offset to it because how they pace or change or the top of it. So, um. You know, I, I would offer that I think their front porch is more of a focus.
Did you want to address the specific comments made by our. Our professional in his report of section seven, I think you covered most of them. Or, if you already got one.
I'm good with these comments.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That's because I forgot to bring a copy.
What, what you do by man? Briefly, that is the rear dwelling currently. Being used as a, as a residential dwelling, is?
Yeah, it is, yes, so I'm supposed to state my name, as you told, so Eric Chiarella. Uh, last name is spelled C H I A R E L L A.
Okay.
And yes, it's.
You're the owner of this property?
I'm the owner of this property, yes.
Okay, so it's, is present being used as a rental?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
The same gentleman for twenty years.
And the, and the accessory garage structure. It's in front of the shed to be removed, that, that's the accessory structure to the principal building, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But it does count toward the total parking for the site.
Are, are there any proposals with regard to placement on the second story? Um, to improve conditions by way of placing dry well, recharge, um, runoff?
We had not proposed at this moment, um, because we were reducing the coverage that was on the site to an amount that was permitted by the ordinance. But if that's a requirement, then that's a requirement, you know, do what we have to do.
Get the questions. And right now, is there a sep- separate utility service to each one of them, and that will continue, right, which you do. There's really no improvement proposed to the year. Second dwelling, right? Okay. Proceed.
Good evening, for the record, Christine Capone, it's. C H R I S T I N E, Capone is C O F O N E. Business address is one thirty-five Half Mile Road, between two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one.
She was performed as up here before the board before. Would you like her to go through her credentials? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Capone, you're familiar with this site?
I am, I've been around several of these.
And you're familiar with the plan that's before the board tonight?
Yes.
And have you reached any conclusions as to whether this. Application. Could qualify for the board's approval, given its history and given the changes which the applicant proposes to make to the site?
Yes, as I classified it at the last hearing, um, this is a situation where the applicant is not becoming closer into performance with his own plan. By improving on many of the pre-existing conditions, um, this Libby, this Waterbury went into them in detail, but we are eliminating the lot covered variance and we're improving. Um, many of the setback conditions, so from a bulk criteria, we're actually bringing the safe closure into performance. We are asking for an expansion of a non-conforming use, as I testified last month, it was my opinion, the applicant couldn't have put a birdhouse on this without asking for a G two variance. So I think we are properly before the board, I know there was some question, that's not what I'm seeking in interpretation. And it was my opinion that we were properly requesting the D variant relief, because. The R five zone of the subject property is located, does not allow two structures on one lot, and that's why we need the D variance. Because we are increasing the front structure. I believe we have demonstrated that this is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use, that is not an exact or perfect science, I have done. Many cases in my twenty-eight year career, and I can tell you that it is definitely a bit of voodoo science, because you have to go on a fact-finding expedition. Looking for documents, and I think the fact that we were able to produce a map. Showing that there was a dwelling on this property going back to nineteen twenty-two, to me, as from a planner who sees a lot of these type of cases, that that's compelling evidence to me. As far as if the dwelling or owner occupied, renter occupied, was it continuously rented? To me, that that doesn't really matter, because when you're dealing with, um. An abandonment case, right, if you're looking to see, was the use ever abandoned? Vacancy, or if the applicant did not use the property or did not rent it, you need an overt actor in intent to abandon. And based on my conversations with Mr. Chiarella, um, based on the information that he provided, all things look to be, that this was always used as a second dwelling on the property. Whether it was rented at some point, and then utilized by a family member or another, and then flip-flop back and forth. Me and the planner, I'm not persuaded by that, but I don't remain to the board's findings, I don't think you need to determine that it was continuously rented. Uh, we believe, based on our due diligence and our research, that it was continuously occupied by residential use. So when you're dealing with an expansion of a non-conforming use, the Burr Bridge case, which is the prevailing case that we deal with under Burr Bridge, is we look at, okay. If the use is thriving and not, and not likely to end soon, what can the board do as far as impose a reasonable condition on the applicant? To make it more harmonious, or make it blend more with its surroundings? Well, exactly those things include doing is bringing the safe closure into performance with the bulk criteria. Also, we meet, we're actually quite a few square feet below the maximum available floor area. You're allowed twenty-two hundred square feet in this zoning district, and we're at twenty-one sixty-seven. I also pulled the tax records for some of the other properties on Church Street, just to look in, and I'll be at the two dwellings, um. Twelve and sixteen, the sixteen is the PIQ, that the property in question, that's one thousand five hundred and twenty-five square feet. The one right next door, twelve square, our twelve church is seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet. But then when you look at the tax records for eleven Church Street, that's two thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet. Fifteen church is two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight, nineteen church is two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six. So from a planning point of view, based on my review of visiting the subject property and looking at the tax records. I would say that this application is certainly harmonious and will blend well with the existing character of the street. Um, certainly if the board's comfort level were for us to put a dry well in, and you felt that with the improvements that we're making to the property. I'm sure the applicant would be amenable to doing that as a condition of any approval, if the board were so inclined to move that way. That's something I'm sure we could talk about, but the negative criteria, when you're dealing with an application, asks you as a board. Not to hold us to us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant and the variance outweigh any detriment. And here, I think the fact that the applicant has really worked very hard to make sure that the two dwelling together. Meet within the HFAR or the R five zone, that we are improving on the bulk of criteria. And that we are certainly able to eliminate a lot of non-conformities, would allow the board to come to the conclusion. That at the applicant meets his burden of proof with respect to positive and negative criteria, and this to me is a textbook Burr Bridge case. A textbook Burr Bridge case where you would use the opportunity to take a pre-existing non-conforming use. And have the current application bring it closer to conformance, improve the curb appeal of the street, eliminates the non-conformities, in fact. I teach planning and zoning courses, and if I were teaching a case on Burr Bridge, or a case on expansion of non-conforming uses. Um, if the board were to move favorably, I would, I would point to this as a great application of the balancing act that goes on in planning. The balancing of positive and negative criteria to come to the resulting complication that meets its burden of proof, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. Um, can you speak to the issue that I brought up prior, because we are expanding from, and I know in the whole. The front house is perfectly conforming, it's smaller than what one would expect in the zone. Um, I'll just make you know that the tax records, as we own them on the county tax records, are not accurate by any means, when I'm talking about square footage, they're just not. Um. But how can you, uh, uh. Help me to understand how we're not. Increasing the density, the, the intensity of the use, when I have. Potentially have four cars now in this spot, in this spot, as opposed to one or two, you are gonna rent the back property, I could, I assume, continuously. And now we're going to a four-bedroom house, or what is it, a small. But how do we, uh, help me, help me through that?
Well, it is an expansion of a non-conforming use, and that's the D two relief, right?
Right, I understand.
The literal expansion is a D two expansion of a non-conforming.
Well, we feel a potential of a, of a very, very great increase in intensity in the fortified zone, that's not our third, so we understand how that's a big use of the zone.
So I would say, I mean, the best thing to do is to drive second, drive the street. You'll see that there are, while the tax records may not be particularly accurate. If you go and you drive on the street, there are certainly dwellings that are much larger than the subject property. That is being proposed by the applicant, that are likely four and five bedroom dwellings, and I think that the applicant is proposing a home that is. Quite consistent with the character of the area, I think that if the applicant didn't have the cottage in the back. You would still have the same intensity, they would just build a larger house in the front. So if the zone contemplates twenty-two hundred square feet on a smaller lot that the applicant is proposing. Let's not forget that this property is oversized for the R sub five zone by about three thousand square feet.
Well, that's why we have the ratio, right?
I understand, but the zone contains a twenty-two hundred square foot home on a five thousand square foot lot. So here, you have two structures that comprise twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven square feet. On about an eight thousand square foot lot, so I appreciate that, yes, it's a technical variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use. But it is also one that is eliminating lot coverage, improving on setbacks, and not seeking a parking variance. And consistent with the size of other dwellings on the street, and much more consistent with, um. The size of the property that the, the zone could contemplate.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Capone?
Have you met the penetration requirement on both the left and the right side of the house?
I'm gonna defer that to our architect, I believe that we have, sir, but I think, I believe that we have. We're not seeking any relief for that, and no relief was called out.
Yes. Did you mention in January, today's your birthday?
Uh, it was February seventh.
Oh.
Just concluded. For a go-board application.
Oh, you did better?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. Thanks, does anybody else have questions, Mr. Capone? Thank you, Mr.
You're welcome. I won't be far.
The follow-up on Mr. uh, on Dr. Lafferty's question, do we have some, some data and, and some indication?
I'm sorry, we have some indication as to the.
To, to Dr. Lafferty's question about penetration on the, on the property. I see one window on the second quarter.
Our architect is here.
I don't know what side that is. Of both, really? Okay.
Windows on the side. And many be, I haven't seen CI. And you were here at the last meeting, that was, and you testified that. I don't stand it, yes. With, with question from, uh, Dr. Lafferty. Uh, with respect to finished arrangement on the sides of the building, the main building.
Correct, main building.
Main building, yes, we have existing. On the north side of the side, which we're, um, moving and proposing for places. on the north side of the side, which we are um moving and proposing for places with only windows. Currently, all the windows in the house are double bond. Um, the remaining windows uh in the back and property are to remain be very consistent. And we are creating the opening in the kitchen along that facade as well. Two in the rear are existing. The window in the back, right, one of the properties existing. There is currently a door existing there as well, which we're sliding through the south. And we are shifting an existing opening here. We are also moving the window that's in currently the property. Um, and there is currently two existing windows on the front, if you're minimizing the board. And the question from the second floor.
Now, I mean, if you look at the, if you look at the house from the side for both, exactly. Uh, and you look at second floor addition, there's only one window.
Is that a bathroom? Is that the only window that's on that side?
For additional window, additional, get additional light on the left second floor.
Well, it was the way, the most efficient layout of the bedrooms, so to make the beds fit the way they did, it, it made sense to propose egress window on the south side of the property as opposed to having egress windows, which by code have to be three feet wide. Um, it would kind of kill that wall where I'm putting the bed and furniture. And for symmetry, we kept that same look on the side, but that's the reason why the windows face the south. Um, there's also that large opening and nothing above the first floor, so for apartment access, it's the most easily accessible area to the bedrooms. Um, and to answer your question, yes, there is a, a, a window in the bathroom on that facade. And as well as in the main corridor, allow natural lighting. Um, this area here is the southern enclosure, so the sun could actually wrap around this part of the house and allow natural lighting to penetrate deep into that corridor. Um, we haven't gone this far with the design, but we opened it, we talked about putting side lights in. Um, side lights rather, to allow additional natural lighting to the bedroom. We could do that move throughout there for it, if that would easily board to have more natural lighting to play.
I, I understand why you have this, so your window is running back in on the side of it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. It's when you're, when you're looking at this from the.
Look a little bit.
You look at this from the floor, and you are really, the second floor is approaching on the uh, on the side meeting. And so if you put that kind of a mass on the side without more, without more windows, it's a little off. Yeah.
We could propose a reorientation of the bed and the furniture rooms and put additional windows on the side if that would ease the board on perfectly looking to that. I think the exhibit you're looking at here, this elevation. I think you probably put on a window along staircase. If we could put one down in addition to.
In order to affect the bedroom.
Yeah, we could reorient these, to put more windows on the side if that would ease the board perfectly to that.
Since that second floor is approaching on the, on the side yard. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it look more, more attractive.
If I could, we need the side yard setback. We do not need a variance for a side yard setback on that side.
There are no both, there are no both variances involved, so.
Yes. It's not completely aesthetic.
Really aesthetic, yeah. We're not increasing the nonconformity at this point, going vertically. Really aesthetic.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can just stop for, yeah.
That's, that's really just a, for me, I would do it.
That's a good idea.
Maybe it'd be hard to read. Check this thing.
Yeah. Right, right.
Thank you. Mineral side yard setback.
It's the rear structure, the existing rear structure that encroaches inside.
Yeah, the rear structure is two point one feet off of that side, where seven feet is required. The front building where the proposed addition is meets all your setback requirements.
It is.
Just wanted to clarify, because I didn't want you.
No, it's fine. Okay. Uh, anybody have questions on the architect?
I have one question. Is there any intent to reside in second dwelling as well? It's something we did talk about, bringing the materiality um in conformance of both dwellings match. Can I relate to one? Yes, it's something you discussed.
Okay.
And I believe that is the plan.
Yeah.
It is gonna happen.
Yeah, we've got to re, re, re reside, possibly put more energy efficient windows throughout, make everything bounce.
So, yeah, can we stipulate to, to that?
Yes. And it was recently renovated, right, inside?
It was.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the, from the witnesses?
Do we have questions of professionals? Does anybody in the public have questions for Mr. Lawrence's professional? Yes, please, of course, thank you, please.
How was Stockholm?
You saw the testimony before the board paid the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I did.
Wonderful.
Now, we'll stop them. I look at seven hundred River Road. My rear of my property adjoins the subject property. And my only concern in this application is my, my.
I don't want to cut you off, I just want to, at this point, if you have questions for the professionals.
Well, yeah, I do.
Oh, please, address.
My, my issue is, I mean, lot coverage, specifically the driveway. I wasn't here at the last meeting, as I was unable to attend. From what you're, you've spoken of, that you were talking about ribbons, these are concrete. They exist the way it is right now, because the drive, currently, and over the land, I've lived, I've lived at this house since nineteen seventy four. The driveway is, the backyard is used as just one big driveway, right? And cars park everywhere, and basically, there's problems with, the, the property is slightly higher than my property. So what happens is the ground gets compacted because of the cars parking there. And when it rains or when there's, there's water intrusion onto my property and I have problems with moss, my, my lawn turning into moss. In fact, in nineteen ninety seven, I came before the board, when they applaud, made the application for the deck, and indicated that same issue when I was assured by the current that uh homeowner at, at the time, that it was not a problem, there would, it would be permeable below the deck. And they put up the deck and half my yard turned into moss, it was terrible. Fortunately, the, the tree fell on the deck, the deck went away, and then I didn't have a problem. So my concern, my concern truly is permeable ground, because this is, in terms of this property, a lot of it's covered with building. I don't have a problem with them expanding their house, I understand that. I'm just concerned that there will be enough permeable land so that there won't be water intrusion onto my property. And that's reasonable, you know, obviously. So, um, I don't know if you want to stay up so you can see if I'm pointing, is that okay? Actually. Yeah, so, yeah, so I just have to also describe as I do it so the record gets it correct. So are you not four, or are you five foot and one? I'm hoping up to near the house or near the balcony. My lot is lot five. Okay, so lot five is in the center where the house, uh, the house, uh, my, my lot ends. My lot ends by the corner of the joint in the lot.
It's either five or point one north.
On River Road, um, yeah, yeah. So the five, because there's a lot on here. So lots four, so lots four is kind of in the back. I want to say that it looks like the property line comes in, if you look at the um leads and bounds on that, where the property line, it said, you're at sixty, twenty three, twenty seven, and the lot line looks like it goes through the two in the sixty two, just the current area and you are. Okay, so you are in the back area that's probably looking more so at where the parking is rather than the building, correct?
Oh. I got you.
Okay. So we had uh supposed to take some of the wood patio in the second lot. And we were going to reshape some of the stone area back here, and the wood patio was not going back in. So we will be, we propose to keep it a stone. Okay, that's good, that's good. The board had uh made a suggestion of a dry well and would take some of the roof water. So roof water, particularly, I would think you'd be mainly concerned about this back door, because that's one. That's, that's exactly where the water comes through, come through at this area of the, of the property. So I would think that this back corner and this little part back in the rear of the building would be probably more of your concern. So we'd be happy to leave it all stone, we'd be happy to, you know, uh, take what's going to that back corner and and recharge it in so that it would help to reduce. And we did take some of these other things off of the site so that it's, it's a little less coverage than where it was. Yeah, that was, that was my only concern. And I, and I'm looking at my client to say is that.
Yes.
Yes.
And then with that, will you also provide a soil test?
We'll have to, yes, it's part of that. I would just ask if that could be a condition of any approval the board would get, so that I can work that out with your engineer, since I probably wouldn't be able to have.
Additional approval, you do the soil testing, posing area for, for the dry wells, subject to the engineers.
That's actually your board.
It's okay. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm sure the testimony gave the board the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
I do.
You state your names by last name, of course, please.
Joanne Vincent, I live at six eight six River Road, lot three. On River Road, and, oh, so my pretty comes across the back. Right, and my concern was the same uh about this driveway staying permeable. And also one of the buildings being removed. So we say the shed, the shed is going to be removed. Uh, we stipulated that at the last meeting. We will keep this area stone and we will take uh recharge the water from the back of roof leaders into the dry well, so it just run off toward the back. And that could help to reduce. That's fine, yeah, my only concern was drainage. Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. Any more questions for the, for the professionals? The record reflect, no, thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, I don't think we have anything further from uh our witnesses. Uh, and so I just would like to briefly say uh the improvements that my client intends to make to this property are really very substantial. And based on the testimony and certainly the testimony from at least the phone. We believe that a positive resolution of this uh is narrative. And it's the benefit of not only my client, but also to the neighborhood. And so we would ask that you uh approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any members of the public have any more comments to make before we deliver? Reply, no. Nice, what we think. I have a logic in that, I don't have to go first.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
Uh, I think everyone's done their homework on this, and I think everyone's really spent a lot of time researching, researching the path records and uh I think the presentation has been excellent. And I compliment you on that, and I think that the the house as dedicated is an improvement to the area, and I think once the uh the drainage and runoff issues are resolved, uh I have no objection.
Thank you. That's good. Um.
And I do want to put on the record that that tell us not here last time, but he hasn't, he'll be able to certify that he reviewed the record uh in its entirety, and I think we.
That way I knew Mrs. Capone's birthday.
Put that certification in at this point in time, we'll mark that as part of the record, we'll mark that as, I think it's Z, you're in the zone in one two. Uh, once that certification is out, I'll make sure you have that.
Thank you, thanks. Go ahead. So I will follow up with uh what Skip said, uh, or Dr. Laffer. Um, you know, this is one of the very, not very more often than not, we come across these very unique properties and very even um, you know, I think you guys did a great job showing that the dwelling back to before uh the zoning laws even um in existence, and from um, you know, watching the video today, I think that was the main sticking point that we really had to deal with. And I think you satisfied that. Then add on to the improvements that you're going to do regarding drainage, I could not be more sympathetic, I live at the bottom of the hill as well. Um, you know, I think it's a uh, you know, what we're, we're trying to do when we go through the zoning process is to improve what's existing, and I think um, you know, the conformity notwithstanding, this is an improvement. Um, so I have no objection to this, and I hope it moves forward.
Thank you.
I, I agree with um Dr. Laffer and Mr. Kingslock. Um, I think that you guys did a great job with your presentation um and working. I, I don't know if we're gonna stipulate it up or I will, um, that's already so long as that's in there, I think um I would also um support it.
Uh, no, I mean, I don't think I, I don't have anything that wasn't already added, I think dry well is important. I do think it's gonna be beautiful and it'll improve the uh can't seem there, I don't improve the look of the, the property, uh, I do think the presentation was excellent. Still a little skeptical on the second dwelling, but um I think uh to the extent of uh the evidence that exists, it's, it's uh, it's, it's been there and then continuously occupied or not, I think I think I'm okay with it. Thank you. So, thank you.
I believe nothing else to add, Mr. Chairman, I think everyone's said it very well and uh very nice application and uh definitely you guys did your homework and thanks for uh bringing that information.
Exactly, it's definitely the most evidence that we've gotten in any one of these cases that we've seen from thirteen or fourteen years in the board about. Um. What was there, what wasn't there, I'm, I'm constantly conflicted as to why things exist and nobody can explain them, but you're not allowed that. Um, I do still have a bit of an issue with, with the backyard parking lot. This is back to what it looks like to me, I'm sorry. Um, but I think if we can mitigate the water issues and the runoff um to at least help the neighbors out on that, that would be a big uh, a big help. Anybody feel strongly enough to make a motion? Um, I don't make a motion to approve with the stipulation of adding a dry well, was there anything else?
Soil testing dry well, subject to the engineers' review. Uh, I don't know how far in depth you want to get with regard to the windows, I think unless that's a non-issue at this point in time, it's not issue. Um, I think that was really because there really aren't any of the bulk criteria. Um, they, they're conforming as to that, but to the dry well to improve the and contain water on site to be loaded, they can, I think we put that in the stipulation.
There is a request to make the, the signs match on the two.
Correct, and that the dwelling, both drawings, uh, the, the exterior facade would be designed to match to match the uh materials that they coordinate with one another.
And I don't have a real problem with the windows.
Did we also need to add that the shed is being removed, or is that?
I think that's already the rapid issue, that, that, that's been marked on your.
So to approve, I moved to approve the application with the stipulations that we're just discussing. That's what I do.
Mr. Nick Chessing?
Yes.
Ms. Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Corser?
Yes.
Dr. Roffer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kingslock?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We got two cheers. All right. I was ready on that. It's only on the. Sort of good way to say. And that wall, the one that we. What is that? And then that wasn't like this very point. Yeah.
Before this everybody, so we'll reach for everyone's hands up. And the original instructions. Please do that and it's all directed to the house there. Organize us for exhibits that I think we already have. I have. Mark your application as A1. And A2 is denial, you know, it's following your correspondence, yeah, A3 is a survey plan uh, June four twenty-two. Um, A, excuse me, that's A3, A4 is the architectural plant's cliche. Uh, dated August five. We, we have a packet of photographs. Nine, we're gonna mark that as one exhibit. Just tie that up with, you know, the accuracy of the conditions. Uh, the A5, one package, nine photographs. Uh, the VB1 will be the engineer's report uh, going back. Standard line two twenty-two, the signature of Mr. Vizzo. See, I have a board, aerial.
A6?
Let's mark that A6, if you want, mark that A6 and again, as I say, a new disposition of which project. And keep the underlying board, we mark it, we keep it, mark that. Three six and aerial. Any other exhibits, sir? So, so any concerns the chair has?
Good evening, Mr. Brodsky.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ray Brodsky. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, so Josh uh, and Amanda Dideo. Uh, property before this evening, pertaining to the property located at. The application before we this evening, pertaining to the property located eleven range walk. In your R fifteen zone. Mr. Cole, that's it, service in order.
Yes, services confirmed.
So, yes, uh. Members of the board, the application uh, for eleven range um, seeks various approval to permit. The interior renovation of, of, of the home, but and also. In addition uh, to the home, a two-story addition, primarily to the rear uh, of the existing home. Uh, there's small addition in the front, uh. The uh, as you, you go through uh, we hear uh, the testimony. Um, you'll hear the details of all of that, you'll also hear that. Some revisions, uh, a pretty significant revision that was made to remove uh, one component of the application. Based on some discussions that the property owner had with the adjacent neighbor. But, um, so the driving force here is the applicant just. Working with the existing home. Um, to upgrade it, to modernize it, to increase the functionality uh, of the existing home. Uh, to bring it up to modern contemporary standards for. For the applicants and their. Current order and uh, soon, soon to, to be some additional, uh, children, they'll go from three to four bedrooms. And. Um, there are some unique components uh, pertaining to this property, primarily the lot size. Lot size um, is about seventy-two hundred and eleven square feet. So it's, you know, less than half of the minimum lot size required in the zone, so that, of course. Um, presents challenges with people like uh, Tony, the architect, to, to work with uh. An undersized lot, the regularly shaped, you see it has that sort of indent at the end with the range walk uh, cul-de-sac. And they like, and, and, and the applicants love the house and they, they wanna keep it, they're not looking to raise and rebuild, they're looking to improve. That, that, that which it, it exists. So. I think the main there is that it's necessitated by virtue of the application, not surprisingly. Is the floor area ratio due to the constraints, so I don't look for a lot. The uh, the application does comply with, with. Uh, it's well below the, the permitted back and then floor area for the site. Complies with the building coverage, block coverage. And you'll hear as we go through the testimony from Mr. Condors and also um, our planner. Uh, Ms. Kefon, that um, you know, as, as is often the case, we kinda. Look to up like here in other zones, in this case, we looked at the R seven point five. Which is kind of a closer match to this lot size and. And the, you'll see the FAR that's permitted in, in the R seven five is what is proposed for the application. And we also comply importantly uh, with all the coverage uh, building coverage, lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera. Not only the R fifteen, but also within the R seven point five. Uh, now, and I mentioned the uh, the um. Revision to the plan that was made very recently, within the last couple of days, so. We'll, we'll have to present it to you uh, in testimony, in testimony is that. Uh, in addition to the main addition on the rear of the lot, there was also proposed, you'll see in the plans. Uh, as you've seen in the plans, a three-foot addition to the existing garage.
Is that reflected in the plan that I'm looking at now, or is that?
Plan that you have shows the recent addition thing to the garage. We, we are, we're gonna revise the application to remove that from the application, um. Uh, the applicants were very mindful, spoke with all of the residents, in, including the immediately adjacent resident. Who is not here tonight, but indicated a preference for that addition there not to be done. And uh, in an effort to be good neighbors, uh, the videos agreed to. Uh, extract that.
Funny, that was, that was one of the points I would like to make.
Sure it was, because it exacerbated a setback condition and all of that.
Brodsky, do you still need the driveway addition or is that?
We do not, we do not, oh, correct. So. With that background, unless the board has any other question, what I'd like to do is. Have uh, Mr. Condors, he's already been sworn in to just. More uh, artfully and articulately than I uh, describe the revision to the plan. The existing property was proposed upon the application. Uh, Anthony Condors, C O N D O U R I S. Twenty Bingham Avenue, Rumsen, two years. All right, Tony, if you would, well, you know, let's, you wanna start just to get marked with the, with the mark of A six, right? Is it the aerial, uh, and Tony, that is prepared by you?
By my office, yes.
And you marked it A six, I don't think there's a date on there, is there?
There's no data.
Alright, so let's date it uh, today.
It was taken February, March two, two thousand twenty-three.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, before I show you the plans, I just wanna, let me come back to this, but I just wanted to show you the, the surroundings here, so this is the lot in question. Um, this is the neighbor to the uh, the right side where. The homeowners agreed to. Remove that garage addition. Uh, the other side of the property. The uh, the west side, um, is where we have a setback variant requirement, I just wanted to show you uh, the amount of buffering that's between. This house and the neighbors, uh, so the large, large distance between the. Neighbors of left as there is right, so um, lot trees. So just wanted to point that out to you before I started talking. So on the cover sheet, you'll see uh.
So these are your artifacts, okay?
Yeah, they've already marked at A four, these are the ones that were submitted to you, there's nothing to change about that. Um, so why don't I start right off the bat with the site plan, if you look to the. To the right side of the site, you'll see we have a hatched area where we were proposing addition to the garage. So that is going to be removed, um, along with the driveway extension that you can also see there on the secondary. So we were proposing a six point three foot setback. Now we're going back to a nine point three foot setback.
Which idea is existing, right?
Which is the existing setback, right, and we're not. Going over the, over that garage of any kind of second story.
What was the, what was the purpose of extending the garage, did that a little bit wider garage, it probably had to do with the mudroom maybe?
It's a tight garage, yeah, okay, yeah. But I'm sorry, while you're on this, the garage still can fit one vehicle. One, yeah, correct, yes. Rad four?
Yeah.
They have a rad four, they're, they're, they're scratches on there. So I'll quickly run through the uh, the variances, um, so we have some existing conditions, the minimum wire area, uh, fifteen thousand, this is the R fifteen zone. Uh, fifty thousand square feet required, this lot has seven thousand two hundred and eleven square feet, so it's less than half what, what is required. Uh, we also have a little lot frontage, a hundred feet required, we are uh, at plus or minus sixty. So we're short on lot frontage, so those are two existing conditions. For the uh, bulk variances. We have a required twenty setback of thirty-five feet. Sixteen point eight feet is existing and there's no change to that. Uh, minimum rear setback is thirty feet and we don't need a variance for that.
I'm sorry, can I, can I stop real quick?
Yeah.
For front yard setback, there's an existing condition of sixteen point eight. However, you're proposing a second floor addition, which is within that setback. So that would be a very.
That's true, yeah, so that is a very.
Are you going for the sufficient space or are you?
Well, I was going through the uh. The fact, I was just explaining that there's no change to the actual front setback number, but yes, we are, we are exacerbated into the front setback.
Except that it's setback.
But it is setback.
And you're putting columns in the roof over the porch.
Yes. But the setback is taken to the stairs, so it hasn't changed, but yes, you're right, we are, we are, we are. Yeah, well, it's behind, absolutely.
Okay, and then the, the minimum lot width has been hundred feet, right, and you're sixty feet and. And a lot that, that is hundred twenty feet and you're at hundred fifty, you're direct to other existing conditions, right?
Just to go under, currently there's no cover over that porch, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, then uh. So we have some sites, we have a side setback variance we're requesting, so on the west side of the property, you'll see that existing houses. Is uh, at three point four feet away from the. Side setback, uh, we are extending that wall back, so there is a variance to uh, continue that. Side setback and then of course, we're also going up on the second floor as well, so we're extending it vertically as well as toward the rear. And then for. The. Twelve feet and a total of thirty is required, we're proposing three point four feet and a total of. Nine point seven, which is actually gonna go up to twelve, twelve point seven, because we are taking off that. Piece of the garage.
And the number, uh, height were good on number of stories as well?
Yes, height are good and I should point out, they're actually meeting the height of the R seven point five zone, which is thirty feet.
As well as the R.
And so going and as well, A fifteen allows thirty-two, so we're meeting.
Not exceeding thirty.
Yeah, there was a lot of uh, thought put behind really treating this like an R seven point.
I appreciate it.
But you're trying to get invested, because we're meeting the floor ratio and also, we're also meeting the coverages of the R fifteen, which are much more stringent. Coverages, so we're kinda working both ends of the thing.
I believe you have thirty point three feet. I mean, we could comply.
If it is thirty point three, I'll make it thirty.
You comply with the zone there.
We comply with that.
But, and I think there was a reference to storage, but there's no issue, right?
Yeah, there was a, the part of the denial was that there was a third story, but there's no, there's no.
Yeah, so. Per the definitions. It, it is a third story based on how the. The attic level is configured.
We, we've been running across this.
Sonya pull downstairs.
Yeah, we've been running across this, so I think there's some confusion or some interpretation on the definition. Um, I think should the board. See fifty grand relief, though, I think we can probably. Enclose that with the, with the uh, the relief, I, my personal opinion is it's not a third story, Mr. Riz has a different.
I'm just curious, how is, how is it a third story?
Or so, just using two definitions, story. Says that portion of a building between a floor and a ceiling, excluding cellars. And then half story, which would be the exception, so it could be two and a half. That portion of a building under a gable hip or gambler roof, the wall plates of which on at least two opposite exterior walls. Are not more than two feet above the floor, such half story. A basement shall also be included as a half story, so in this case, I think three of the four sides actually extend up. Whereas if only two opposite sides, they, that would be a half story.
Because of the gables.
Because of the gable.
But I thought I always had, I thought I had that fixed there, but I guess it doesn't matter.
It doesn't speak to that, no, that's not part of the, it's not part of the definition. We're moving forward to rectify this, but at the moment it did get flagged, so. Let me speak to that, so Mr. Brodsky's. It, it isn't an apoplectic red shade yet. I, I, I just wanna make clear, to the extent that you are meeting a height requirement, in fact, under the height requirement. There is a technical, which with regard to stories, our interpretation with regard to that, that that's a bulk. That's, that's a C variance, because you're not exceeding both height and a story, to the extent that you're coming into height. We're interpreting that as a C bulk variance.
Okay, so given that we were in discussions, do we have to include that, should we see fifty to grant?
I think, I think it should, and I, I think having explained that, I think we wanna cover that on your record, so nobody thinks. Oops, how, how did somebody miss this or did the things, which is why I wouldn't spread it in this home record.
We're allowing a third story, but we won't, we won't realize.
Appreciate that, and, and for the record though, Tony, it, it is only. It's, it's at the point, we actually indicated that thoroughly.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, okay, okay. So uh. Uh, one of the main, one of the bigger variances is the floor ratio, that's our, our elephant in the room, I guess you'd say, so. Again, this lot is very similar to an R seven point five zone. Uh, so we really tried hard to meet that floor ratio for the R, R seven point five and. It, it, it kinda justifies that the house is appropriate for the size of the lot, so it's uh. It's on the opposite extreme where you have an oversized lot, you're trying to get more floor ratio out of it, it's, we're, we're, we're tailoring the house to fifty, the size of the lot, so that's. That's how we.
The floor ratio on a, on a seven, I don't have my table seen, let's, let's look for on that.
And we're right there. Uh, now, we're proposing a thirty-five percent block coverage. That would go down, once we remove these uh. The garage addition and the driveway addition, but I would, I would testify that we may wanna put some more of that into the patio, so I don't know if the. If we conclude that the block coverage is going down, maybe we could keep that thirty-five percent and give it to some of the patio. Or at least have the option.
Do we have a lot of coverage issue, Royal?
No.
They're, they're at thirty-four point nine eight, so they're right, yeah, right there, right there, but that's just because the last thing they looked at was the patio itself, so they just. Maximize the patio.
Uh, so getting back to the, so you have this, in the middle of the cover sheet, you'll see this rendering in the exterior, so uh, you'll see. Very traditional house, um, very similar to the house that are in the neighborhood. Um, you're seeing a lot of very big modern boxes building up nowadays, but uh, this, this is definitely sympathetic to this surroundings and uh. House came up very attractive, the uh, the original house is um. Has a lot of very outdated finishes in it, very some kind of crumbling, but the good news is that the structure itself is pretty sound. So there was some talk in the beginning of actually knocking the house down and building a new one, but after looking at it, it's, we're just going to add to what's there and we're using, using this foundation.
And you don't have a problem framing on top of the existing, it's a single story now, isn't it?
It's, uh, no, it's, there's like a half, there's a, no, there's some dormers, it's kind of like a cave.
Okay, and we have no problem putting that structure on top of what's just in there now?
No.
And Tony, just talk a little bit about the front, the cover on the front.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, so we, we uh, our, our sixteen point eight foot front setback goes to the stairs. Um, currently, there is a one-story section of the house that sticks out, uh, you can see on the. On the plot line here, existing one-story. Um, and yes, there is no roof over the porch right now, but, and we are adding one, but it's very small. Little roof, which I think enhances the, the front of the house, but. Our first floor uh, does remain where that current first floor is, and our, our second floor addition is setback. Basically where the, the currents from uh, second floor is setback, so. The house steps back, let me, let me show you on the elevations here.
I noticed that it looked probably because of the, the gamble.
Yeah, so you see here, um, if you can see this. On the uh, on the left side elevation. If you look to the right of the page, uh, you'll see in the front there that, that little corridor sticking out, and then you'll see the one-story section that has its own roof. And then you'll see that the gambrel section is significantly setback. And uh, Tony, one of the other elements of relief is with respect to parking.
And, uh, Tony, one of the other elements of relief is with respect to parking, uh, right?
Yeah.
So, so we have our one-car garage. Which I guess currently is located, is that actually located outside the setback?
It is behind the setback.
Okay, um, but, but. Any additional parking would be within, you, we have capacity to park a couple of cars, but it would be.
But yes.
In the front setback.
It would be, they, both, if you put, you could easily fit two cars on that driveway, both of them would be encroached on the front.
And that's driven by virtue of the fact that, um. Those pages, an existing house, the need.
Yeah, right, we're keeping the garage where it is and that's what we have.
And we're going to four bedrooms?
We're going to four bedrooms.
So we need three, three spades?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So should the boys see fifty grand to really, we would have to include that as well within.
Yes.
Request for parking, can we do that?
There's a bigger variance.
Like, we could either grant relief or. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Um, fair enough. If you have.
Uh, yeah, so, that, I don't have to, especially, yeah, most of the questions.
I just have one more variant.
Yeah.
Do you have much?
Sure.
So obviously, you talked to the neighbor about, um, the building extension, that extends to that problem, but there is a requirement. To provide the combined rear setback between your property and the adjacent property.
Yes. Yeah, we did look at it, we, we definitely don't need thirty feet sure. You know, we would, uh, the other neighbor, I don't, I don't have a survey, but he's really close to the property line. Uh, so we probably would have been at about ten feet, so now with taking that three feet off, we're, we're back to somewhere around thirteen.
Okay, so you're requesting that variance.
We are, right, as an existing condition. Yes. Exactly, and it's a one-story, fortunately, the one-story structure in that one second, so.
Now you're correctly, we're just in position now that you're not.
Right, yeah, right, right. Questions for Mr. Condor?
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or who it's a question for, Steve, and tell me, um, which trees need to come down? Great, thanks.
You're, you're adding a significant amount of, of bulk. Over the stairs. With the, with the pitch of the roof. With the pitch of the roof and the, uh, and the columns, you're really moving, you're really moving everything forward considerably.
Well, that's a six by, a six by four, four, six foot by four new porch.
It is, yeah.
It's, it's a pretty small area. Now, I, I don't know if you're getting confused, because I do have sort of the column detail. Around the front of the house there, that almost makes it look like an enclosed porch, if that had to be part of the main house, that'd be good. That's only trim, it looks like column.
Again, there's, I just have some, some simple questions. Existing house, there's a cellar, you know?
A cellar, yeah.
Okay, so no changes to that?
No changes.
Um, I think there's an existing fireplace, is that going to be removed also?
It will be removed, but we are adding a gas fireplace to the rear family. It's, you can see a little rectangle there.
Okay, that's contained now.
That's within the house, yes.
But to Condor's, if you look at V three. And you look at the roadside elevation, that's not thin on the house, that's a hill.
Uh, if you look at V three on the left side elevation, there you talk about left side.
Right side elevation.
No, that, that is actually, yeah, this, this little piece sticking out here about four feet is the porch. This column here and this column here are, are details on the corners of the building.
Well, what's supporting that porch? Two columns.
There's two columns in the front, if you look at the front elevation. You'll see this little piece in the middle. That's the only part that's actually a porch sticking out. All the stuff in the background is part of the living space. But in order to give it kind of a porch look, we put corner detail on it to make.
Sort of corner pillars, corner pillars on it.
Yeah.
On the front aspect of a porch.
That's correct. Front aspect of the building.
Yeah, you got a good house.
They're not.
So you can just go. Right, yeah, there, this is the wrap around the porch, and he's that wrap with the trim on it.
Yes.
By the size of that porch, you say it's like, it's four by six, right? And we're looking at, is that the, if, there's no change to the, uh, the height of the porch, is there, it's still two s?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we're going to the same first floor that we have.
Thank you.
Um, and Tony, the shed that exists on the side, that's removed.
That's removed, and we, you know, we never even included it in our calculation yet. Uh, we do have, we do show it on the site plan, it's in a dashed line, and it's being removed. And you consider, uh, new dry wells, you're accounting for the increase in air use. Uh, we didn't talk about it, but I'm sure it's, uh, it's something that the board. Got value to the board.
Well, considering it's adjacent to Shippensburg Pond, I would think that probably a good idea, this also.
With, with the, with the elimination of the garage addition, what impact does that have with regard to? Garage doors and then the door and the step up and the door into the home that's presently shown on the. Front elevation.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
So I'm, I'm assuming you're going to be moving that garage.
I get that.
Over a bit, which is.
You were actually.
Soon to come into the steps.
No, you're right, the left side of the garage door is actually where. Right where it was, we were actually extending the garage door.
So you're just making, you're going for the.
We're going back to, so there's still room for the steps. Okay.
So that dimension doesn't change, it's just from the right hand side?
Yeah, so the garage door is going to go back to being whatever size it is now.
I see.
I mean, because the garage door is a little wider.
Where, where are you going to park?
In the, I'm sorry?
Where, where are you parking the cars?
One in the garage, and then if you look at the site plan. Then the driveway. From the garage, that five out of forty-foot driveway, even more than that. Where we can, ten, we can park two more cars.
Like, could, could you show me the area again? Take a look at the, the right side of the property, looks, looks like it's break, uh, obviously, it's, what's it, it's nine, three?
Nine, three, yeah, to the garage.
But there's. There also appears to be some landscaping there, is there any change in the part of landscaping between those two homes?
No, actually, we, most of that, a lot of that landscaping is actually on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
So, that's, under the fence between the two properties.
And you said there'll be no tree removal plan?
No, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All your utilities will remain the same?
No changes. They should be, I'm, I'm assuming, but if, if any. If we have to go look into it during construction, it has anything.
Any more, any questions for Mr. Condor? And members of the public, have any questions for Mr. Condor?
Back.
All better.
I think I need to be sworn in on this one, or no? I was wanting, but.
You were previously.
But not except.
Sworn for you again, just to, just to make sure you didn't forget, or kind of, uh. You have a floor.
That was going, okay. And you testified before this board to file once or twice, including the like few minutes ago.
Yeah.
So why don't, uh, Christine, why don't we just, uh, go through for the board, you know, what you were at, do, what you reviewed, and what you're finding to our architecture application?
Yeah, because I'd like to follow instructions, I will follow Mr. Crowe back instructions. It's Christine Capone, C H R I S T I N E, Capone, C O F O N E, business address is one twenty-five half mile, or. Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey. Um, so what we did is the same thing, you know, we do for every other case, and we, we do this for twenty-eight years now. So we have it down to a bit of science in our office. We always like to go meet the applicant or the property owner. I had the oppo, opportunity to do that, I was inside the structure on the property, so I did that, we review the applicant inclusion documents, and then of course, we review your plan in the review letter. This, um. As Mr. Condor has indicated, when you look at the notice and you look at Mr. Riz's letter, there's a lot of variances listed out, but many of them, the majority of them are relating to existing conditions of the property. Right, we went through the lot area, the lot back and the lot fronted, all of which are non-conforming, and, you know, an area substantially so, or about half of the size. Of the property, and those are not going to be impacted by this application, either positively or negatively, they're existing conditions, there's no ability for us to cure them. So those are just conditions that appear from the property. The front yard setback is currently also non-conforming, I agree, we are, well, we're not increasing that setback of sixteen point eight for the base. Well, and we are adding a porch or a roof forward to the columns to it, which definitely impacts, um, the massing of it. But I have been in the town enough to know that it also, the balancing of that, and that's what we do as planners, right? You as the board planner is up there, me as the applicant planner, you're at, you're a professional planner, we're always trying to balance and get the best application that we can for the applicant in the town. Fairhaven also likes porches, because they add to the curb appeal of a structure. So we are, um, in, improving the porch. We do need a front yard setback variance, though, because the second story structure also doesn't conform at twenty-eight feet, where the zone allows thirty-five. The rear setback is more than conforming, it's thirty feet is what we're proposing, um, or thirty feet which are required, and we're proposing about fifty feet. Now, the side yard setback is an existing non-conformity to the west at three point four feet. Uh, we're running that back additionally, and we're going up in that area, and then we learned today, or yesterday, and since today.
Today.
That the, um, the applicant was going to modify the structure. Which certainly helps, because that was really one of the places where we were only, that was really the only area where we were impacting the bulk intensity of the structure. Um, so the applicant made a really right away decision to eliminate that variance. So that leaves us, um, with the floor area ratio. It's, we are proposing an FA floor area ratio. Of, what's your, point three, no, point three five, yeah, point three five, which is consistent with the R seven five zone, where the zone allows point two oh. And unlike other cases that this board hears, when you're dealing with, um, other D variances, if you will, a D one variance. We hear things like particular suitability and the positive and negative criteria. When you're dealing with a D variance for FAR, the test is, and the proof that are required of the applicant to deliver to the board. Is that the site can handle the excess floor area ratio, in a, in accordance with the Randolph, um, the, the Town Center case. And what that means is, despite the fact that the applicant is proposing more floor area ratio than is contemplated in the zone, is can the zone handle it? So, and we say, okay, so what does that mean, right, from a planning point of view, or does it mean, can it handle it? Well, of course, we look at, are we violating coverage? Are we violating setbacks? Are we violating parking requirement? And here you have a situation where we're only increasing one bedroom, right? We're asking for some additional, um, floor area, but we're only increasing. The bedroom count by one, we can certainly provide for off-street parking, it's at the, the terminus of a very low intensity street. So the applicant could certainly take advantage of on-street parking, but we're certainly not seeking new parking variance relief. We also, you heard a willingness on behalf of this applicant, as you did the earlier applicant, to put in a dry well. So when you look at the test, can it handle, can the site handle the FAR? I mean, we really did, as a planning point of view, my entire planning outline is almost predicated on comparing this lot to the R seven five zone. Because in the R seven five zone, you are allowed lots of seventy-five hundred square feet. And those lots would be permitted to have the floor area ratio of point three five. So I think that when you look and you're, and you as board planners ask yourself, well, can this lot handle the FAR that's being proposed for it? It can, because in Fairhaven, we write standards into the code that would allow for this size structure on this size lot. Just not in this location, because it's an R fifteen zone, so, but it doesn't, that doesn't matter. When you're looking at, can the site support it? Yes, of course, we know that a seventy-five hundred square foot lot can support a house of this size, because our very R seven five zone standards would allow for this type of development. So then the test becomes, okay. In this area, does that make sense? In this location on Green's block, does this dwelling make sense? And the proposed dwelling is, is two thousand five hundred and twenty-four square feet. Um, certainly, on Green's block, there are homes that have been renovated. So I think that the board can be comfortable that, yes, the site can support the excess FAR, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the zone plan. And again, that's the test, right? It doesn't say, hey applicant, make it to a, a proof that there is absolutely no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant outweigh the detriment. And your planner was kind in his review letter. Um, of December of last year, she put in, in that, right in that review letter, he has pictures of the subject property. He's got pictures of the frontage, pictures of the rear, pictures of the existing shed, so I think that without, um. Insulting the applicant's home, we can agree that the application with one board certainly upgrades the further curb appeal and the aesthetics on the subject of property. So I think from a planning point of view, I think that this is a great application. Um, I think we need our burden of proof, and I think the board can be comfortable that the site can handle the excess FAR that the applicants are proposing.
Question. Will the elevation on the garage change?
The, when you say, Dr. When you say elevation, are you talking about the height or the grade or the appearance of it?
Uh, well, no, we, we did ask in heights of the roof, yes.
And, and how much did you adjust?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I don't have a. Don't have any, just, and, but, uh. Right, yeah, yeah, if you did increase the pitch of the garage to kind of make, make it match the pitch of the house, then it would really be more attractive than having a very flat looking roof. But yes, there is. We did, I guess you could say we extended that garage vertically as well, because we did ask the pitch of the roof.
So that, it's not an impact setback then, once you go vertical with it?
Yeah.
So.
And how many other houses on that, on that, on a grain wall are, uh, less than seventy-five hundred square feet? Or less than lots of less than seventy-five hundred square feet?
I, I can't tell you for sure, I leave a lot across the street, but, uh, I, I.
Do we know that?
Um, I don't know the exact number, how many are less than seventy-five hundred square feet? But I would agree with Mr. Condor, it's the one that is across the street, it's definitely less than, uh, fifteen, that's less than seventy-five hundred? Or less, Doctor, than the required for the R fifteen? Because the R fifteen fires fifteen thousand square feet.
And what about the one next door? That's small as all?
Figure is.
That is a pretty small area.
Oh, you get the one to the, the one to the right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the left is the larger one.
Yes.
We have no dimensions of the existing height of the, of the hash.
I don't know, photos are helpful.
Yes.
It, it is in the setback, but it's, it's the lesser of the two setbacks. So I expect the third fault variance is.
Yeah.
But, so just another experiment. Yeah, because we're going up, but we don't know how much we're going up, right?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Oh, no. That was the question. Tell me, any idea from the photo?
It's hard to tell.
It really is, yeah.
It's, it's, I'm sure, the, except the matching accessory structure should not actually.
This, this would be a principal.
Yeah, it's not a deep down garage.
Right. You know, and I, when I look at these photos of the existing garage, it looks like the ridge is about. Five feet or so above the gutter line. Um, at my plans, we're about, you know, six, six and a half feet above, maybe.
I don't think it's that significant.
It's not, yeah.
But it, it is, it, it would have to be more.
I think it would probably want, Tony, let's just say, uh, seventeen, we say, five versus seven.
Can you just, can you dimension that, I guess, on the, on the final version of this plan?
Sure, uh, but the old, but the old one is there. You want me to give the old?
Yes, but that's, yes, just, just the new one.
Okay.
Yeah, we have received the new plan, removing that three feet, right?
We are.
We just decided that today.
The app and some records, because the app is going to be providing us new plans in regard to. The elimination of the. Garage addition. Height of the. Height of the attached garage. And the and the driveway. Proval of the driveway extension.
And including a dry well.
And again, I I don't know if you configured dry wells at this point in time, but something along those lines. So I want to make sure that those plans get presented, because we make those conditional approval. Like to make sure that they get well in advance, so that there aren't any issues with regard to before our next meeting. So there aren't the issues from our engineer regarding those. Um there was discussion about the patio in the back maybe getting bigger based on the lot coverage.
We would, we would still conform with lockers, so whatever credit we're getting for removing the garage.
You find, you have those dimensions placed, again, moralizing.
Yeah, and with the drywall and request sort of task as well.
That would go go.
But we we wouldn't show the drywall on the revised plan at this point.
Well, no, you would, you might show an approximate location, but I would like to, again, just. We haven't heard from the public in case of additional issues. We're just trying to corral issues right now and we definitely. Okay, maybe some questions for Mr. Ponderous? Any members of the public have questions for Mr. Ponderous? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further. Mr. and Mrs. video are here, if the board has any questions.
Then just want to check ahead and go with this before. Does anybody have questions for this? Sorry, I'm pitching it to them, I'm just trying to keep it all by hand. Great, thank you, thank you.
Just so the board is aware also, I did have seven technical comments in my first letter and all of them have been addressed uh with the resumption.
Great, thank you.
So I have nothing further, Mr. Chair, uh other than to just uh, you know, reiterate that, you know, it's the. Lots of challenges associated with with this property and and we're hopeful that the board agrees that what's been proposed is uh. It is a responsible uh uh upgrade to the existing home. Uh obviously, we know here in Fairhaven, uh Fairhaven prefers uh um. To the extent possible, saving and and upgrading and renovating existing homes that opposed to blowing, you know, blowing them down and building new. Which is exactly what has been done here. Um there is uh, um you know, we 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 were diligently. Uh cognizant of the R seven five zoning criteria, which we thought was a reasonable guide in terms of. Um you know, uh establishing that the the property can indeed handle what is proposed here. Um and you know, the uh, you you, I didn't mention earlier, you know, as is as the case, both both the. Uh both owners here are working from home, one full time, one most of the time. And so you you see in the floor plan in office, that was part, another part of the driving force in addition to the growing, the growing family. And you know, aesthetically significant improvements here associated uh with the application for. That coupled with Ms. Pone's testimony, and I would submit and request that the board act favorably on that.
Thank you. Anyone else say? Thank you, Mr. Brett. And members of the public have, want to make any comments on the application, questions? Thank you. Celebration. I'll start. Um when I looked at this, I I actually looked at the R five zone again instead of R seven and a half, and of course. I I it it's obvious that the the. The lot is is of a certain size and it and it's in a in a wrong zone. Unfortunately, we can only go down one zone. From the R fifteen to the R ten, which wouldn't help us, otherwise I don't think we'd be here. Um I appreciate the removal of the three foot from the garage that really stuck in my head was we're going closer on one side when we were already only at nine feet. Um but that was appreciated and um. In the front porch, yeah, it's sixteen feet, but it's stoop, you know, it's not, and and we're setting the second floor back. Uh I I think given. The size of the lot and the way the house could conform on that size of a lot in a different zone. I think it's a good design. I think it's 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 a vast improvement always there. I don't have a problem with the left side of it because. Of the the lot that's adjacent on the left side, um I'm very familiar with the house on the right side of this and many times. And um you know, here's what it is, you're both very close to that line. And I think uh, I think I think the design will work out well.
I'm I'm hung up on the uh maximum capital floor area ratio. It's uh, it's it's a big leap and I think it's a large house on a relatively small lot. And I think that in this town, what we're trying to do is trying to avoid those kind of thing. And um. I think you're increasing the bulk in the front of the house. And um. I'm kind of uncomfortable with the size of the house on the uh on the lot.
If we look at the ratio. As compared to the size of the lot that it is. You're looking at the ratios compared to R fifteen. When we look at it, you know, when you, when in R fifteen and then you take the eighth, that's scripted, look at it as, the way I look at it is if I look at it as seven and a half. More seven and a half, then you're at the right ratio with that size of house. I think we get hung up on the fact that the numbers are the numbers because we're looking at it as an eight thousand square feet. Or whatever lots are in. In an R fifteen zone screws up with it, you know what I'm saying? Because you're looking at the ratio is based on a on a fifteen thousand square foot lot.
I I understand that and you know, I also understand that uh. You you've got a house next to it that uh. Uh you're you're putting a fairly large house close to a a house that's relatively close to it. This is, this is not a big area and I I hate to see houses jammed in in relatively small area. Uh and and I think I have a problem with it.
Now, we are at twenty five hundred and twenty four square feet. Um so um four bedrooms, so it's not um.
I know you want to jump in, but it's for the board discussion. No, I mean, when we looked at this, I looked at this earlier and I I kind of looked at it in the R five uh criteria as well, where twenty two hundred is the max. And I I, and I respect your your opinions, Skip, I really do. Which is, that's that's what I I looked at.
I look at it, I look at it. I look at it compared to the uh, uh the seven point five, the R seven point five zone. And then I went around and I looked at it, and I looked at it again. Uh in person and then uh I I just. I'm just concerned with this this side house on the side.
Anybody else? Um I appreciate Dr. Lapper's concerns. I usually try to look at these properties in person. I did not get to see this one. But I am kind of familiar with that neighborhood. I have a lot of friends that live over there. It is a very charming neighborhood. There are are many houses and many um lots that have this challenge over there. They are. Tiny, nonconforming existing. Uh I think when we weigh the benefits of this renovation, which is a renovation, not a uh complete rebuild. Uh you know, you're taking what basically looks like a tiny little gate and turning it into something that's going to have a much greater. Curb appeal and I think it's going to fit in better with the neighborhood. Uh you know, I think that offsets some of the concerns that we have with the. A lot of coverage. Uh and have a little square footage. With the addition of dry well to protect the pond, I really have uh uh no problem with this and I think with the. Uh Mr. Gatoros's design, I think it's going to be an improvement.
Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, so I uh, I think it's very, it's very nice looking house. I think it's going to be a good drive as well. I think it's going to be. You know, a substantial improvement over what's there. I do kind of share uh Dr. Lawper's concerns, it's bulking the front of the house up and especially this. Kind of left side here that's set back a little bit to the left of the door, that's going to be coming up as well. Um but that said, I mean, I do understand it's a really small lot and. It's really, I mean, there's not much you can do with it, right? So uh that said, I think I'd be in support of including a dry well, as Sid consol mentioned. But I do have concerns about how it's going to show uh, you know, front facing onto the the whole stack there.
I think we are constrained and we have to remember we're using, like you said, we're using the property that's there and not knocking down. The thing about that, if we knocked it down and moved it, you move it back a little bit, you still have the same lock constraints, you really couldn't. Right.
Right, because if you're using point two.
Correct, no matter what, you're going to be using. You have anything else?
No, I I think it's very good application. Uh you know, it's it's just sort of a functional, the lot size and zone that's in. Um I I do think there's some merit to. Approach of your renovating house as opposed to the knocking down and and rebuilding. I think that happens probably too much in town where. It was some character of the older homes. And uh I'm in favor of the application.
Also, one more thing I wanted to add to, I that my biggest hang up was also the garage, so I do appreciate you slamming that because. It does feel like it would have been on top of the other, so. For what it's worth, I think I went a long way with most of the folks here.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say as well. The fact that you work with the neighbors, I thought was was huge and um. And before addressing it, just went ahead and removed that. Um that was a big concern. Um I do appreciate also the fact that it's a renovation rather than a tear down and a um. A brand new construction, so um and there is obviously a vast improvement in the aesthetics. And what we had to what it will be. I do share Dr. Lapper's concerns about um. Looking like it's going to be more substantial than, I I have a hard time picturing it. So um. I hope that it won't look out of place. I I think I think it'll fit with the character of the neighborhood. It just, it is a really tiny little lot. Um. I have it glanced nicely, but I do think it's a, it's a method that's always important.
Are you keeping the cedar initial original cedar stick siding or is it going to like a composite?
We're we're not, we're not keeping the original siding. Well, I'll I'll tell you, everyone laughs, but I have original cedar, you know, my house.
Yes.
And we stripped it down. And we and we brought it back to life and sealed it and I get compliments on it all the time because cedar is so expensive now that no one wants to. Right. Do it, but it 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 looks. You know, it's got a very like unique.
Yeah, no, it's it's really cool and it's be very hard to match it on this particular house.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's unfortunately literally falling off by the day.
Yeah. You kind of strip it out for what it's worth.
Okay, Daniel, what's going on with the street itself? You can't drive down that street.
With the the, I don't know, I deferred to.
That's a, range walk is a, it's a little weird. It's a private road, I think technically, so I don't even think the town is responding.
You think you're wiping your hands driving down the street.
I'm not sure what's. I have friends who live back there. Every time I go there, I can't walk into the street, like where?
Okay, he's talking a lot of friends of Johnny Potter, a little soul of a Mitch Cooper, right?
All right, given that, um I will make a motion to approve the application as we're not submitted with the um. Do I have to spell them all out? Well, I can, I can read, what what we're talking about is placement of the dry wells. We're going to need probably some soil testing there and some decent. Some information that's to our engineer. You can make that a condition of approval as long as the engineer is satisfied with those things. Some revisions to your plans to show a garage height, show the elimination of the. Uh addition to the garage, elimination of the extension of the garage driveway. Patio, the patio area, adjustment of patio, so we have some dimensions again, so we. So that really, really it benefits you, so you don't get hung up, so if there's one plan on there, that's not meeting the dimension, you're going to end up back in front of us. Forget those dimensions, as long as you're within that lot coverage that you have or or. The areas that you're originally set back, it's not going to be a problem with that. And I think that covers it. Uh we are going to have the technical violations to confirm the preexisting. Non-exacerbating variances, those you're exacerbating, we're going to receive various with regard to the height of the structure. Uh because you're definitely uh if you're. It really requires three parts. Is the location parts. So you need a way for some front of parking. Wait a second.
It's John Chasing?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yep, yes.
Dr. Rocker?
Did you guys look like very nice people and I I I think you have enough votes to carry it, but I'm going to vote no.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Board.
Let's just finish up our. Yes, you know what, let's do that now. So then, you know, why didn't, why didn't we even discuss this earlier? But let's do this first, so. If we're looking at the April meeting, we have it slated for the sixth. Easter's the ninth, do we have any issue with moving it to the thirteenth?
That's super.
Oh, is it real?
Yeah. That's why it's.
Yeah, actually, I will be away the sixth. So we've got three down to the sixth.
I'll be away the third.
I'll be away the thirteen too. I think we keep it at the sixth and we do the best we can, fingers crossed.
So um.
What do we have? And here's a better question, what do we have on? Oh, there you go. Then leave it for the sixth and cross your fingers.
Exactly.
It will be posting in control. Nice, there you go. Thought you said special mass. Uh there's a wonderful cathedral there. Um let's finish it, what we have here, so. Resolution for contracts for for professionals. Uh we're going to ca, I'm I'm going to request that you carry the one I had an opportunity to spin on. Yes. Can we, we'll carry the contracts with the attorney board planner until the uh supposed April meeting. Uh. Stormwater management training, uh has anybody who's a new member done that yet?
I did it.
You did?
I did it as well.
Okay, good, that's fantastic.
Jerry, did you do it online circa nineteen ninety three?
You used to have it like drive. No, 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 this is just stormwater, it's like.
Man on like Windows ninety five or something.
And anybody that was reappointed, I don't know how much reappointed, I guess Al would have to do it. Uh board member training, have you guys done any of that? The Brookdale.
No, I.
It's the New Jersey. Planners Association that has been reading.
Right, yeah.
Um I haven't done mine yet.
You have to choose your date so I can register.
It goes out through June, right?
It does, it has to be completed within eighteen months of your.
No, of course you got to sit through this. COVID allowed me to do it online. It was a long day.
That even though I did it for planning board, I don't know, I. Didn't know the answer to that and I didn't send you the, oh, I sent you to the chief. She completed the same training we're talking about as a member of planning.
Forever gone, I've never heard the thing.
Well, so it's, so she need to do the same training.
I do not know what what requirements are, I mean, potentially, most of the general principles remain the same, the standards. I would have thought it's the same. Yeah, they don't, they don't differ. Yeah.
That's what.
Who is the entity that doesn't manage this reach out?
And J P O, I do have your, obviously I have your certificate from doing the planning board. But is that who would make the determination?
I think so.
Okay, so I'll send a note over to the.
But list.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be silly, but you never know.
The state.
I think that'd be fine.
That's what I'm getting to, I need to save the best for last.
There you go.
Uh annual report, everybody's favorite topic. Um I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review their twenty twenty one report. I made some comments on it. I don't know if we've done anything with it. Um I'm inclined, I I thought it was fine. I'm inclined to push the twenty 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 one report forward if.
I haven't distributed to the board because I didn't see the final.
Okay.
Version.
I think Todd was going to take a look at some of the recommendations, wasn't he?
Yeah, I know you made some comments on it. I went on top of your comments. I'll leave it with. Yeah, I know you made some comments on it, I went on top of your comments, I'll leave it with Mr. Leader and then we'll take that to, to council in April. Um, twenty-twenty-two report, and it, it, I get it, this, these things are a, a nightmare, and I'd love to get this done before the end of twenty-twenty-four, if possible. Um, it's a process, it has to be done. It really is, uh, it's easier than it used to be because we now have, um, some data that, that Sandy compiled for us, so I asked for a volunteer or a volunteer to, uh, help put together the, the things that go into the report, um, you can use the last one as a guideline, it's very low. Mr. Lover very good. And, uh, would anybody be willing to help out on that? No, I'll be, I'll help you. All right, I tell you what, Marty, I'll, I'll be this year. Okay. So, uh, let the record reflect that Mr. Ryan and myself will put together the twenty-seven, twenty-two report and we'll have it done before the end of twenty-three, so Cindy, whenever you can go for it, please.
So I sent out a draft of it, so I'll resend it out.
No, send out the twenty-one.
Okay.
The one that we just did was the twenty-one.
Right, but they were playing on twenty-two.
Yeah, so we need to date it for twenty-two.
Which I also sent that out recently, too.
Wait.
So you have that, or I'll make sure that, I'll resend it.
Okay. All right. Did Drew do the, uh, the draft on it?
The twenty-twenty-two is based on the way the original one was formatted.
But which one did?
Drew did twenty-one.
Drew did twenty-one.
Now we're talking about twenty-one.
And would, and, uh, you're going to send out twenty-one also? Yeah, twenty-one is already written, we have some marked up comments on it, but we'll send it to you. And then hopefully we can memorialize it, if not in April, by May, I know people won't be here in April, so. That will, well done. Yeah, I know this, I know this. Uh, that's all I have, any members of the public? Mrs. Blazer, no?
Yeah, we're looking to be really neat meeting, I mean, really.
I appreciate that. I really do, because I don't know why the council can't move that, but I think we're getting it.
I mean, the council is doing it.
I know. Where? I think some of it has to do with exhibition, with exhibits that, that have to be presented, but that's, uh, about mine. Mr. Lover.
It is a quick up, hey, Drew LaBarber, um, we've been meeting with the ladies committee on some of those ordinances, so that's progressed nicely, hopefully in the next four to six weeks, the initial, uh, draft will be ready for September review. Behind that is four other ordinances, two meetings ago, Mr. Leader asked me to follow up Mr. Rizzo, so we have four ordinances kind of ready to go after this, so just want to be guys putting that down.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Lover, thank you for your help with that, by the way, I appreciate it. Anybody have anything else?
Do we have to do anything with the fats, uh, recognizing?
You know, I thought we did prepare a writing. Yeah, I didn't know if that was supposed to be on the agenda or not.
It was sent out only today to the board, the letter that was sent over, because you sent a letter to.
I sent it to Mayor, Mayor in the House.
As, as.
On the twenty-third. So you have a letter in your.
So they didn't see it before we took. Nevermind.
Well, it's based on our discussion from.
Yeah. It really was just.
Memorializing our discussion, which I read it today, so, um, yeah, I don't think we have to do anything with that, our recommendation with the council.
My, my general, just to give you. Sorry.
So, no, I'll talk to you later.
Okay, just, just a very, very recap, you had, you had the recommendations that we made, and some of your consultants, you've had the observation that we made, but uh, Mr. Ryan, I mean, um, I want to take on the general remarks and some remarks that were made, but, uh, by and large, we weren't endorsing any specific changes to the fenceworthens at this point in time, but we were discussing process. Right, it might be helpful if there was, you know, education, some I think cues from the website. Uh, if there was a little more information given out with product with regard to, is it, there seems to be some confusion as to the permitting. How, how, how do you get a permit? When you need a permit, you know, do you need a permit if you're just replacing flats or, you know, what, when do you need that? Get that information out and maybe make that user-friendly online, or if someone is coming in for a permit, that you might have something that you, a handheld to walk away with, make sure you're filling it out properly. It's not a specific recommendation to endorse or change in the ordinance that we presented to you, but mostly um, again, to regenerate that, you know, the process seems to be generally working, that when people do have some issues, they come before, if they qualify for grants, they get the grants. If they don't, they have to go to the law. And I think that's where we're at, I think it's a fair characterization of what was presented.
Good.
Mr. Coax, where do we stand on the, uh, uh, on the litigation against the board?
I, I'm not handling that for you, other than what we had the brief discussion the other day, I don't know where we are beyond that. Uh, I would, I would go into executive session to give you.
Yeah.
I really don't have much more detail other than what we discussed last time.
I discuss them often. Given that Mr. Ryan isn't here, I don't think we should be able to discuss it, unfortunately.
Yeah. Um, there is, you know, maybe we should go in, maybe we should go in. We should go briefly into the executive session, just briefly to discuss that, not, not that there's an adversarial role, but there's a newer rip along that, that we had.
I saw, yeah, um, I recused out of that, so.
It's not, it's not going to happen quickly.
No, it's not, um, I think we'll probably hold off on that.
Okay.
Especially given that there are members here who were involved in that, that or their members who are not here that were not, that are involved in that.
As long as it's not time sensitive.
No, it's not.
No, no, I don't think it is.
No. I think we should hold up on it.
Can I ask one question, and if it's out of line, just say. Is, is it, because I know that.
This is where lawyers.
Yeah, no, you know what? Is it still going forward, because they.
At this point, the litigation's going forward, I think I can say that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think we should really discuss.
No, that's fine.
Because we have some people that have conflicts, and I don't want that.
Anyway, uh, most of your journey. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Cindy, thank you, everybody, thanks, Jordan. Sorry. It was, I got a, we got a lender today.[1789.31]